Pray that we will be good conservators of that land that you've given us for all the hills and the valleys and the streams and woods. We're thankful for those and we pray that we will take care of them. We're thankful for the people that live in this county. Pray that you'll help this commission to take care of them and make decisions that are in their best interest. Pray you'll continue to watch over us and guide us every day. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Would you want to be speaker with the place of allegiance?
Place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we need a preliminary agenda for tonight's meeting. Do we have a motion to approve this? We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Next, we have awards and presentation. We have none tonight. We come to public comments from citizens. We have signed up to speak tonight, Mr. O'Beal.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce my committee member, friend Robbie Gopmane, who's also here. We're representing Roseberry Rescue Group, which you may know is a nonprofit organization created for the very simple and only responsibility we have, and that is for the protection of the water weeds in Roseberry to try to eliminate the water weeds in Roseberry. And this is a project that we've started back in 2008. We've done three weed management projects in the meantime. The last one was in 2015. And each of these projects lasts for about three years, they're effective for about three year periods of time. So at the end of 2017, it became apparent that there would have to be a new project in 2018. We've already done all the preparatory work for that, and now we're at what seems to be the very most difficult part, and that is to try to secure the funding to do the plan. The plan this time is a full embankment treatment as it has been before, which is really focused on the center of the embankment to try to keep the weeds pushed back and managed in the center of the embankment. TBA does some work around the shorelines, but our focus is on the center of the embankment, which becomes difficult to navigate through unless you work to manage these weeds and to control these weeds. Of course, I think most of you know that these are non-native weeds. They're not, this is mill pool and hydro that we focus on. This is, if it were a weed that was typical in this region, we wouldn't address those weeds, but these are weeds that are drawn in from various sources and they spread across the TBA system. There is a chemical that we use called fluoridone that is successful in managing this weed in slow-moving bodies of water like this embankment. So if you look at this and then Big Spring and Gunnersville, those are two areas that are, because of the nature of the water and the flow of the water, are very successful with the use of this chemical. And like I said, it manages the chemical for, the chemical manages the process for a three-year period. The 2018 project is $180,000, and that's for the management of the process for the treatments which are staged over a period of time, starting in the middle of May. We anticipate that we begin in the middle of May. In the past, the funding has been basically 25 percent, at least what we envisioned was 25 percent coming from the city of Scottsboro, 25 percent from the legislative delegation funding, 25 percent from Jackson County Commission, and then 25 percent was raised by lakefront property owners and citizens of Scottsboro. Typically, we have had pretty good success from the legislative delegation. We've had excellent success from the city of Scottsboro in funding the project, and we've had good success from the citizens. But what we haven't had is very good success with the county commission. And that's despite that and the natural tendency that when you've asked once or twice for a program like this and it hasn't been successful, there's a tendency not to try again. We come back this time to ask again for the funding because it becomes more and more critical each time we do a program like this because TBA is doing less and less. They made a plan four years ago to gradually withdraw from this program, and they're down now where they'll probably do two treatments this year, and that will be one before July and one before Labor Day. And so it's incumbent on us as a group of citizens and bodies of government to take on this task to preserve the pristine beauty of this embankment and to allow folks to come into the embankment and enjoy the embankment. Because as these weeds are spreading across the lake and other regions, it becomes less and less, there are less and less areas that you can actually do things like boating and jet skis and rafting and those sort of activities. And so we come tonight to ask for $30,000 to support the program. We've already been to the city of Scottsboro, and we've opened a discussion with them. We anticipate to have some success with the city of Scottsboro. We began the fundraising for the private citizen group, and as I understand it, the legislative delegation and the commission works together on one, with one's funding now. So we didn't take an approach toward the legislative delegation. Maybe that's incorrect, that's one of the things we want to try to understand. But somewhere we need some help from the county commission or legislative delegation, or both would even be better if that's the case. And, you know, one point I want to stress is that for the county, you know, I mean, even though the embankment is sitting in city of Scottsboro, it's also for all use of everybody. And so the big difference is, is that within this embankment, there's only a few revenue-producing activities in there. You have a restaurant, you have boat rental area, you have a place where the fuel is pumped for the boats, and the taxes are gotten, are gained from that. And then you have the cabins and the campground where you've invested very heavily there to make, to make a good business venture out of that, and, you know, and I think that's been an excellent program. But if you can't access the lake, then it starts to lose some of the luxury that I'm sure that you intended for it to have, and probably some of the financial success you had intended for it to have. So our request is very simple. We would appreciate it if we could count on a $30,000 contribution. It's a three-year program, so this $30,000 would actually be the equivalent of $10,000 a year for a year period of time, but we would need the money upfront for the $30,000. So I guess that's a reasonable summary of our expectation and what we would request, and I'm open for any questions if you have.
One thing, could you clarify what you're talking about with the center of embankment?
You know, with the embankment of Roseberry, it's the area that's coming off the mouth of the river into, that eventually makes its way around the bend, and then there's City Park and then County Park is the, I would call it the back end of the embankment. So that area is, the whole area there is the embankment. And what we're talking about is the area that is really the center of that, not the shoreline so much because TBA treats that and individuals treat that around their own boat dock, but it's actually the center of the embankment.
When you come off the main channel, when you make that turn.
All the way into the park. And once you come all the way into that area. So you're really talking about that center area where you have, over the course of the summer, you see so much boating activity there. People rafting, what do you call it when you pull the thing behind the boat?
Intercoating.
Yeah, tubing and all that sort of stuff, and jet skiing and boating through there. It's not so much as a fishing area, although fishing is good in that area, and this chemical doesn't impact the fishing at all, but it is, it is an area of boating and recreational activity is in this embankment, and that's, and you know, that's why we see as we've done these programs before that you get, that draws a lot of people into the embankment. And I'm sure they buy gas, they buy hamburgers, they buy, they rent pontoon boats from the rental agency and they camp there. So I think if you look at it as a, as a whole, there's really a lot to be gained for the county commission to support this program and to, and to take this problem off of your table and we put it on ours, which is effectively what we're doing. We manage the program ourselves.
Ms. Maney, in your recollection, in that payout from the TBA and Lula taxes, wasn't there $30,000 to go to Route 32?
There was. Twenty-five or thirty, yeah.
It was $30,000. And we got the check just this past week, but you know, that was, that was for the 2015 program. That was the one that was the previous program. So we had waited, we actually borrowed that money to do that project under the idea that someday we would get that amount of money. So, you know, while it's fresh as receiving money, we actually borrowed that money two and a half years ago.
As far as the partnership with delegation and county, that's really not a partnership, but maybe an odd ally. We basically didn't get any of it. And our TBA and Lula tax money has gone down, and of course, that's before my time. I think it is because of most allocations, so everything was cut to balance budget. Am I correct? Don't laugh.
Yeah, and when the current delegation has reworked the TBA and Lula Bevel and done away the discretionary spending, the county got roughly what, a third, a little over a third of those dollars that did go into that discretionary spending, and roughly a third of it went to municipalities and roughly a third went into education, the two education systems in Scottsboro and Jackson County, the weed. And then that same year, our drop in TBA and Lula beat up that third that we got out of that because of the shrinking assets, the shrinking, TBA is based on three different things. It's the assets they have within our county borders, the power they produce within the borders, and the power consumed within their borders. Their consumption's down because their industry's been down. They were writing off Belfine, they closed Widdes Creek, so Widdes Creek's not producing, and now they've sold it so they don't have that asset. So our TBA and Lula dollars go down every year.
Well, I personally know several companies that are growing quite dramatically in this county. I manage one of those. But I can, I can see your problem, and I don't pretend to tell you how to govern. I mean, I know governing is about making tough decisions, but I, but I do think it's important for you to at least consider the fact that, you know, there's a lot of money generated through tourism, there's a lot of money generated through boat sales, gas sales, and those sort of things, and I think it's, you know, it's a legitimate request that when you have a program like this that's, that at least one-fourth of it is being, being contributed by the citizens, besides the taxes they pay, you know, you really are talking about just a request to say, to say, would you please direct part of those taxes to this specific program? At $10,000 a year, it doesn't seem like a lot. If you did it yourself, it'd cost you a lot more, and that's why, you know, it seems like a partnership like this makes good, makes good sense, and, because it's not a problem that's going to go away. You know, I'd like to say it's going to go away. I'd like to say TBA is going to pick up the challenge and go back to the good old days, but even in the good old days in 2008, when they were trading the weeds four times a year, we still had to have this program because the center of the embankment was closing up. So it's, you know, we would appreciate your participation.
It's not an issue that's taken lightly. There's been discussion, you know, about that, Mr. Goffey.
Yeah, like Mr. Mane was saying, it ain't a fact that, you know, we, I don't want y'all to think that we're just refusing to help Roseberry. It ain't that. It's when we made those cuts, you know, we had to balance out what, what are we going to spend money on, and we cut council on aging, senior RAs, those are a bunch of programs, DHR. For, I mean, we can go down a list of stuff, but that's the reason. But I have been working with some of our other elected officials, been talking to them about maybe some other ways to fund this. It ain't something that's going to be a quick fix, but I'm hoping to work with other community leaders, other elected officials, see if we can't come up with something. They won't come out of county general fund or the CD general fund, it would be a way to fund it, you know, and we won't have to be having, you know, y'all had to come here to, you know, to be looking for it.
Yeah, and we would appreciate that certainly because we'd like to find some sort of long-term funding so we don't have to do this here every year. And we'd appreciate that. And there is some work being done on that by a stakeholder group out of Marshall County in conjunction with Jackson County and some things like that. But I mean, the problem we have today is that if we put this off another year, it's going to cost $360,000 next time, and we will eventually lose control of it, and it's going to look like the rest of the embankment. I mean, if you look at it now, if you look from Highway 35 back toward the marina there at County Park, I mean, you know how it looks last year, and it's not going to get any better. And, I mean, you know, this isn't a problem that you can, I recognize that governing is tough decisions, and while I respect all those things that you all do and the decision you have to take, and I don't say that one program is worth the other, I do believe that this is a program that since it's producing revenue, which makes it a little different from some of those programs you mentioned, this is a revenue-producing program for the county with the sales and with the revenue coming from the businesses there. It would seem to me like that this would, would create a special consideration from, from your perspective.
And with that said, we're touching on the growth of industry in our area and the new industry and the growth. Most of those businesses or industries are baited, so therefore we're getting no tax from them either.
Well, we do create payroll, so.
We don't get that much.
This issue of $180,000, is that, how is that, I don't know if anybody's got more than that right there, but what is the company that y'all have to hire to get this?
Yeah, they do, they do the same, they do the work for TBA as well. So they're the, they're the contractor that TBA does to do all the treatments in Jackson and Marshall Counties, and we also hired them as our advisor and as the executor of these programs. They do the weed treatments for this program. They're licensed, they have all the certificates and permits and all that that are required. Because you've got to have somebody that knows what they're doing, or otherwise people just start throwing stuff in the lake because it's an environmental issue.
Well, what I'm getting at, would TBA allow for this weed to be removed?
Yeah, they, they wholeheartedly are in favor of programs like this. They say that this problem is going to have to be solved by, you know, other sources besides TBA. They say we just don't have the funding and we're not going to be able to do it. And I can tell you the reason it is, is because like on Lake Gunnersville, this is a problem that we've dealt with for the last 12, 14 years. But all these other lakes on the TBA system are starting to have similar problems, and they're having spread of weeds there. And so they have a choice, TBA has a choice, and that is to either pick it up and do it in all the other lakes, or to stop doing it in the one lake that they are doing, which is Lake Gunnersville. And so in that case, I mean, it's an easy, it's an easy corporate decision for them to say, well, we just stop it altogether and let the, let the communities pick up this responsibility. I don't think it meets their charter. I think their charter requires certain things. I mean, you know, who's got that kind of time and money to fight TBA over that?
This aquatic bunch is on 431 down there at Clay's Pool. You know anything about them, what they do about removing it or anything?
Who is that?
It's right across from State Department. Clay's Pool on 431.
I don't know.
Right, directly across the State Department. Reason I was asking, I'm someone in law, he had an offer to go to a job in Mississippi, and they came in and removed this. And I mean, I seen the boats and stuff they'd had, it went very, just pulled it up with the roots and, you know, and taking it out of the lakes and stuff. But he had said something about that company right there across from State Department, you know, had some, I think some equipment to do the same thing for that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know anything about it. I can't comment on that except that the only thing that I can add is that, you know, we've done this program three times now using this chemical. And this, and this chemical treatment we use because it's a slow-moving body of water, so you have to have the waters holding in place for a certain period of time so that the treatment works at the bottom of the lake. And they, they've had success with it, and that's what places use like in Florida and some of these places were having tremendous.
What's that right there? Is anything, there's just something to sell.
I can't say. I mean, I can have a look at it and see if they know what it is, but.
It says it's EPA-approved in that thing, the waters.
It could be it's the same thing. I just don't know. I know the chemical is very expensive, and that's where the real cost is.
But I know that company in Mississippi, they just took it and moved it from, you know, like areas around Roseberry and stuff. So that's what it actually needs to say y'all having to face the treatment every year that it was done.
Yeah, any more discussion? Any other commissions?
Mr. Chairman, could I address something? Just to add a little more information before everyone shares, as we're talking about over the past three or four years, the, and we're talking about sales to extra lodging tax or whatever, the lodging tax here is 14 percent, as you probably know. The county's portion of that is 2 percent, and that does not come to the county. The sales tax here locally is 9 percent, and the 2 percent of that sales tax does not come to the county. So we have not been able to participate in the tremendous sales tax growth that other entities have enjoyed over the past few years. So when you do not have a growth tax replace lost revenue, it really, really makes it difficult. These, the commission's not just making excuses or, you know, want to make sure that the facts get out there. With, with the loss of revenue that we've suffered, when you have no growth tax whatsoever, it makes it tough to handle some things like that. I just want to make sure everybody understood that of our sales tax and of our lodging tax, the county clearly not gets zero. No.
Where do you get your taxes? Where do you get your revenue from?
The biggest portion would be from a property tax and from the TBA and Lula taxes, which as I had mentioned, I think it's, the TBA and Lula taxes fell about $26,000 to $700,000 since 2012, and it was our, one of our main revenue sources.
Are you aware that the value of property on lakefront property is valued 10 times the value of property across the street from it? And that, and that's the kind of thing that if the weeds grow up and the, and the lake isn't navigable or usable, that property tax value will go down.
No, no taxes on $100,000. Property tax.
What, what do you want?
You want that we, we say a lot of things we would like to disprove in and fulfill the need to disprove. We had, in fact, learning come what, two months ago, to ask for $9,000 for their, for over there. That's something I feel like, great asset and service to our community, but we just couldn't afford, we just couldn't afford, you know, $9,000 to give in. We haven't given our employees raises in five years now, and it's just, it's hard for us to find enough funds to operate on, much less invest in things that we feel like means to be doing.
I appreciate you doing that.
I don't disagree with, like you said, the voting. My number one favorite thing to do around here, but like I said, our money.
It's hard for us to say no, you know, when you are the citizens around here. But, you know, with the funding, like I just mentioned right there, what Bob said, you know, if you go to Walmart and spend $100, we can get nothing. You know, you think, now that's not right, but, you know.
Well, if there is no more discussion right now, I think we need to discuss this further with, with each other, with one another, and see if there's any viable way that we can find a solution.
Mike, just to point out, if I could, he mentioned the property tax. It is based off sales. So if the property that's on the lake is 10 times that of what's across the street is because it's selling for 10 times that across the street. And there again, like he's pointing out, that, you know, if, if people stop buying that lakefront property, it, the value will go down. And if, you know, if the weeds are bad, I guess they'll stop buying that property.
On a $100,000 house, how much is property tax approximately?
Like I said, really great.
$57,000 if you think that the county.
So just to give you a rough idea, if you was out in the county and you had a $100,000 house, you'd be paying roughly $300, somewhere around there. If you're in the city limits of Scottsboro, a $100,000 house, you'd be paying about $600. So really, you pay about double in the city.
So if you got a.
That's, that's a minus value.
That's right. That's Scottsboro.
It's coming up.
Yeah, all that goes to the city. That's right. That's right. I have been asked by some folks, some officials about adding that to, I mean, the city could add a millage rate or, yup, the city could do anything they want to do. They can add a millage rate to everybody that lives on Roseberry to pay for that. We would collect it, we'd be glad to collect it for them.
Well, in that case, we'd have to turn it into a private lake because I'm sure they wouldn't want to be the only one funding it, and everybody else uses it. I mean, Roseberry is, the people living around Roseberry are not a governmental agency. I can assure you, I have just as much difficulty getting money from them as we do from anybody else, but, you know, okay, look, I, I think we've taken enough of your time, and, you know, it's something that, that we're passionate about, and we hope that you can find a way to help us.
Well, we appreciate you.
We appreciate your time for it.
We appreciate you coming, and we're going to have more discussions and see maybe we can find some kind of solution somewhere.
Okay, well, okay. Is it okay if I?
Yes.
Thank you, buddy. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Now we'll go forward with old business. You'll notice on the issue, we've got a motion to approve the minutes from three different meetings. First one is January the 8th, January 22nd, and February 5th, fall of 2018. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from these meetings as received?
I'm a motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no.
You need to do all three, right?
Right. We're going to do business now. First, we have a motion to approve the Jackson County Council on Aging updated rules and regulations for appropriate behavior.
Like your motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Next, we have a motion to create a temporary office clerk position for Jackson County sanitation for the six months of import.
Make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Next, we have a motion to accept a quote to construct a pavilion at the campground at the county park. And you will see in your packet, we have three quotes. Do we have a motion for any of these, any one of these three?
For Parker River.
Yeah. Carl's everything covered in all of these, or?
I just got two now. That's all I've got. I don't have.
You have this one.
I don't have one.
Hand him back.
There was supposed to have been two more that had come in, but one of them called me back, and that's when I asked Mike if he'd get the other one. But he couldn't start before last July, and I told him we needed something before that. That was in Addison, Alabama.
Well, that's pretty close to $6,800 on that. The only thing is about $6,800 on 6,800 is low.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
So you're looking at about a little over $200 more you have to pay, but you would be keeping close.
All three of them.
All three of them are down here. I, I. The other one, yeah.
Half and a half, I don't know. I got.
Yeah, that's, I think he's welcome. TJ Metal, that's welcome.
That's on the third one. That's the third one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But all three covered the things you need?
Yeah. I read on that one.
Have you worked with, or had any work done by any of these companies that have been before?
The Aphomata company, the other one who built the building down at the, at the park, at the Pope Island place.
Did you ever argue with them?
TJ Metal, I mean, you know.
I know Chambers, he's been in the bar department over.
Mr. Seuss.
Yeah, he's done, he's done work all across Texas County and possible, but he, I know he built the bar hall right there in Woodville.
I mean, lots of licenses and bonded and stuff like that, and you know.
Do we have a motion to accept a quote from one of the three?
I'll make the motions. What, what is my?
Would y'all like to take it at this time?
I want to get this done and get it on the way, but this one has six by six posts and pole worn, steel pole worn dresses. This one doesn't give any explanation of construction things, so it's hard to compare apples to apples.
That's what I kept asking him, if he had talked to him directly.
Yes, yes, if, if we're going to have people turn in bids, we need to write specs, and we need to bid on the specs, you know. We're getting different, you know, we're not, you know, we're not comfortable.
Right. So this says concrete even around 606, is what you guys said.
The one says painted, the other one says.
But this one is, is.
Whether it all, this one they're giving information, this one is different than what's all explained in this one as bid, so I think we need. different than what's all explained in the system, and it's bid, so I think we need, as far as the hate table, because I want to get, move forward with it, but I think we need to table it rather with, uh, a bid spec if we're going to bid it and, and have the people all bid price on, on the same method of construction, the same materials.
Is that, is, is that one okay?
Yeah, I mean, they're all fine, it's just.
This is one that's flat, so we make the way you use this one as.
Yeah, well, you know, crawling's right, this may not be fine for this crawl.
Needs to ride what they want.
You know, maintenance, uh, future maintenance of it and stuff, it, it makes it, you know, six by six bumblebees and, you know, the, those pole worn trusses have webbing that birds will land in, and, you know, what you get underneath there when, when the birds have to lay to land, uh, so I think we need to write a bid spec and, and.
So you make a motion to table it?
I'll say that.
Yeah, a motion to table it at the next, uh, meeting, commission meeting, if we have a second.
Yes, sir.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no.
Now, just to let y'all know, metal prices are going up, so it's possible, you know, in two, three weeks or four, it could be higher than what they are.
We're going to sell multiple bids, multiple prices, and I know we're going to have to bid it out.
Somebody's going to have to write out what's needed.
Somebody's going to have to write out a list of what, uh, what needs to be bid on.
Right, okay.
We can do it, we have two weeks.
Yes. And if you need to, we can put this on, uh, the agenda for the next work session. We can talk about it then. Next, we'll move on to the motion to appoint Eric Doran to the Jackson County Department of Human Resources at the H.R. Board.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. And a motion and a second, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no. Next, we have a motion to appoint Kyle Morris to the Jackson County Personnel Board.
Before we move on to further, did we have any other people turning a ladder, others than?
We had these four. And that's how many?
We have four, I think, two, and we had four, three, that.
Do we have a motion?
Make that motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no. Next, we have a motion to appoint Beth Mannan to the Jackson County Personnel Board. We got a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no. Have a motion to appoint Nate Nippers to the Jackson County Personnel Board. We have a motion, we have a second. A motion and a second, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no. We have a motion to appoint Haley Hicks to the Jackson County Personnel Board. We have a motion, we have a second. A motion and a second, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no. Now we have comments from staff, Mr. Arnold.
I'm not on the agenda. I was supposed to be, I thought, for that, took that position in the mapping appraisal.
Yes, we discussed that last meeting. I thought we were going, I just, I forgot, I'm sorry.
The, the agenda that you sent me, I don't have it, I thought it was on.
It's on that one, I thought.
We've had it in a work position with them, and they can add it to the agenda.
I think it's on the agenda, you know.
They just say on this one.
The one I got filed, it's on there.
Is that, that's probably something.
Yeah, okay. Tell, tell us again what we need to do.
I don't even remember. This was about the, uh, position, the clerk one, uh.
We were going to vote to.
Mapper one in the mapping appraisal office.
Okay, um, just to hire that person?
What you sent me Friday, I guess it's changed now. Says motion to advertise for a clerk one position for the Jackson County Revenue Commissioner's Office Mapping Appraisal Department.
Okay, we'll amend the agenda. We have a motion to advertise for a clerk one position for the Jackson County Revenue Commissioner's Office Mapping Appraisal Department.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no. Was there anything else, Jeff?
Oh, thank you.
Carl, you have anything? Lynn? Ms. Manning?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Porter?
We're good. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Goffey, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Van Vell?
Yes, sir. I would like to commend Jonathan and the public work crew for supposedly being on an off day yesterday, but Mother Nature called and employees that went out and cleaned up. I have had calls from George Lee on 10250, talking about the great deal they done, and I said, he's, he had the guy's name, he said, uh, Danny Hastings and Y. Came out and cut trees up, and he said today to come up, and he said done a magnificent job. He says, please, please say thank you to each and every one who's involved.
Thanks for those comments, I'll pass it to them. Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
Uh, I agree, and, um, did you make no? And, uh, yeah, they great job, told us thank you for going out on the off day. I know there were several happy bus drivers this morning.
Thank you. I was punctual enough. I don't have anything else today, so this concludes everything on today's agenda, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Have a motion. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no. We'll be in the adjournments.